Oh.
Yeah.
That's what Brandon said, yes.
At the airport?
Yes, so they've got all of this.
You know, there's gonna be no underneath. There's gonna be no plywood for like a shell.
Oh.
Or a header cover.
So as long as you guys don't get wet, I'm sure you're fine.
Yeah.
It's me.
If you guys get wet, we have. They're starting over at their.
Do you have to let your son take that cow?
Somebody come.
Why you have kids?
That kid doesn't need anybody making feel good. He's got a lot of. A lot of stuff going on. But being humility is not one of those things. Ready? Okay, it's nine o'clock. It's time in our schedule for our weekly business meeting. If you all stand with me, Janine Shepherd. Hi, Janine.
Hi.
We'll open some prayer.
Your heavenly father. First, we want to take a moment to thank you. You're a good, good father and your ways were good. We thank you for the many blessings you bestow on us each day. Help us to be faithful and look into you for answers and not the world. Please bless the commissioners today. If there is any sickness, inflammation, or disease on their bodies, we ask that you heal them completely in Jesus' name. We ask that you fill them with your healing holy spirit from the top of their heads to the souls of their feet. We ask that you bless their families, bringing peace to any difficulties they have in marriage or family relationships. We ask that you keep their minds sharp and give them wisdom, Lord. We ask that you bless their meeting today and give them supernatural wisdom and insight that only comes from you. And then. We command the enemy to leave this place and we welcome you, Holy Spirit, to come and fill this place. We stand on you, Lord, as our solid rock. Help us to be faithful to you as you are to us. Keep our hearts hungry for you, Lord, and our eyes fixed on you. Lord, we ask that you bless our county and that revival would continue to sweep across our nation. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Janine.
Yeah, if you follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janine, can you pray that we get like superpowers? Because I've always wanted to be able to fly.
I was close.
Yeah. No, forget the rest of elected officials, just the commissioners. Okay, so let's go ahead and crank her up here. Jeff, it looks like it's.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend today's agenda by adding Sheriff's Office item number three, action item discussion decision regarding budget adjustment resolution. This item is added as these funds need to be moved to pay FY 21 bills prior to October 22nd.
Here we have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as amended.
Second that. And we have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, so public comment. Um, three minutes. It looks like we have Susan on Zoom. Susan, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
No. You're really, really quiet.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Barely.
Barely, barely.
Can we turn here or does she need to turn herself up?
She sounds good on Zoom.
Jim, can you hear us? Was he just talking?
Yeah, he was.
She's, she sounds good on Zoom. You guys need to turn up on your end.
We're all, we got it cranked up. Susan, try it again.
Okay, can you hear me?
That's better. There we go.
Okay, I'm speaking up. This is Susan Drumheller. I live in Sagal, Idaho. And I want to encourage you to deny the four minor land divisions for Clagstone Ranch on your consent agenda today. And I ask that you recommend the applicant applicant apply for a subdivision of 12 lots or more instead. These four MLDs create 16 lots. If these four MLDs are approved today, that will total 18 minor land divisions approved in this section. In just nine months totaling 72 five acre parcels. This is a large development that has never complied with the required subdivision application for 11 or more lots. These MLDs all have the title Clagstone Edition, which would clearly indicate to the planning department that they are all part of the same development. Which should trigger a request by the planning department for a subdivision review. The applicant should have been notified upfront that the MLD application was not the correct application. Now, I do appreciate that the county is trying to close loophole that developers have taken advantage of by piling on these MLDs. But I think a decision on these has nothing to do with the old MLD code as it appears that the county has had the discretion to prevent. 18 MLD applications in the same location from being submitted in the first place and to direct them to be processed as a subdivision. When the county initiated a rezone on this property in this section in 2020. U.S. Commissioners assured the concerned neighbors that the code would ensure a big picture review process. And that if density were to get too great, necessary services would be provided. With 72 new parcels, the density of this development requires the necessary services to be provided. Thanks. Um, please do the right thing by these landowners.
Milton, do you want to go ahead and give a little PC in? Because this is the same discussion we had last week and Commissioner Conley wasn't here to see.
It's a similar discussion to last week. The, um. You know, the challenge was with the code is that it, it, uh, it didn't, it didn't consider contiguous parcels. And up until 2016, the county did not regulate splits that were 20 acres or larger. Only the, the ordinance only considered lots that were less than 20 acres. And so in 2016, the only standard that we added. If you were going to create 20 acre parcels or larger was that it needed to have legal access. And so you could still create 20 acre parcels. So a person could take 100 acres and divide it into five twenties. And then, by the way, the code was written, those, each one of those lots was considered a separate parcel for a subdivision purpose. Um, that's just the way the code was. We have changed the code to now, uh. To really make it very difficult. You can't, if, if you came in with those and you own those five contiguous parcels. We would look at that as five lots and you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to take one of those and divide it into four without affecting those other four remaining. And so, um, yeah, there, there can't be, there cannot be contiguous MLDs no longer in the code. But this is, this was done previously. Um, I'm, I'm not sure how we single one person out over. All of the other ones that were done that were contiguous. Uh, this is quite a number of parcels. There's no doubt. But it's, it's not any different than, than the guy that has eight or the guy that has 10 or the guy that has four or the guy that has one. They, they were all treated the same.
Plus, we have to deal with the code and the ordinance as it was at the time of filing.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Bill Wilson, uh, Susan, uh, and I work for the prosecutor's office. So.
Move that mic down.
Short people, fucking me. Okay, so, uh, a land, a landowner's rights vest at the time that they submit a land use application. And that, that's just a, um, a complicated way of saying that you get to utilize the law as it existed when you came in and applied for a permit. So we did close this loophole, but part of the process of doing that is publishing notice of the change and letting people know that there is a loophole. And sometimes you have to, um, take your lumps when you change the rules by allowing, informing people that it exists. So, um, assuming that these MLDs were sought when the law still existed as it used to. We have to allow that the landowner to, uh, utilize those rights as they existed at that time.
And I might add that this is just a land division. So when it comes to providing services to these parcels, that'll still come up in the next phase. So that's still out there looming over them. So. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I've got a, so what is the next phase? What services will be, uh, required? There will be no more services other than, uh, access. Is that correct?
Well, yeah.
It's not, or they still have to have water, they still have to have access.
Well, yeah, in order to build, they, they have to have those things, right? But as far as.
But I mean, from our standpoint, what we control, that's, I think, what I, you know, try to focus on is what, what we always do is our.
Right. Again. While we don't, with a minor land division, while we don't micromanage the, all of the development or all of the stuff that goes inside that. Minor land division, our experience has been that, that the developer has taken care of those things with.
Well, they need you to be able to sell them for the most part.
Right. I mean, so we require a 30 foot easement for a minor land division. So those things were all in place.
So sadly enough, we, Milton and I have talked about this quite a bit about. Being a little bit more nimble when we see that people are taking advantage of our code. And using it against us that we need to be able to respond in a quicker fashion rather than try to lump it all together. Okay, so we've learned some lessons. Um, you know, my warning when we went forward with this is that this would happen. And, um, I was, I was shocked at when it ended up the way it did because then once, once people. It didn't seem like it was happening much. And then suddenly it was just like everybody was doing it.
Yeah, once we posted the notice that we were going to be closing the loophole.
So, yeah, um, we learned and, um, I agree with Susan that. If, if you created 72 lots overall, then you should have been held to a standard that, you know, that all of this. Works together and everybody is on the same page as far as, um.
It, it's true. It's just that, that. I, I don't know how I have the authority to go against what the ordinance says.
You don't. And, and, and it's not that I'm trying to disagree with that. I'm just trying to say that, yeah, we got schooled.
Well, sadly, I don't know if it would have made a difference, but we tried to push this through earlier, but it got stalled out at the Planning and Zoning Commission because a group in the county. Came in and wrongly opposed it, even though we were trying to fix the very thing that they wanted us to fix. They opposed it and it delayed the process. And I mean, they may have still gone after this. Because once we posted that notice that we're closing the loophole, I think that's what really got a lot of these, um, landowners.
There were a lot turning.
Yeah, there were a lot of landowners that jumped on board, but it's just the nature of the beast. We have to do it by law.
But again, we could have probably pulled, we could have been more nimble. Like I'm saying, if we, if we can recognize even a portion of it. Pull that out, deal with it now. I mean, the sooner the better. Just close the loophole. Boom, be done with it, move on. But. We, we tried to keep a group together with the whole. And go through the whole process and it took a year and it gave plenty of warning to everybody out there that, hey. We're going to shut this off.
Yeah, if you're going to do it, do it now because we're shutting it off now.
Yeah.
He did it now. Anyway, so, okay, let's move along. Anyone else wish to make public comment before we move on? See none? We'll move on to the consent agenda.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Let's go ahead and move down to clerk's office. Mike? I'm gonna do is I'm gonna start putting these here.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, commissioners. Uh, this is the time of year when I have two different fiscal year claims batches, one for last year. Uh, one set for that and one set for this coming year and we'll do that a couple of weeks. First, I have fiscal year 21 claims batch number 28 in the amount of $1,139,227.92. Demand batch number 28 in the amount of $80,376.52 totaling $1,219,604.45 for your.
Good, thanks, Mike.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment of FY 21 claims and demands and batch number 28 totaling $1,219,604.45.
Would second that. Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you. Next, I have fiscal year 21 EMS claims batch number 28 in the amount of $9,348, I'm sorry, $9,348.20. And demand batch 28 in the amount of $1,704.46 totaling $11,052.66.
I move to approve payment of the FY 21 EMS claims and demands in batch number 28 totaling $11,052.66.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Go ahead, Mike, number three.
Okay, claims batch number one for fiscal year 22, prospectively. Uh, in the amount of $76,126.56 and demand batch number one in the amount of 1,000 or 1,000,25,572.81 cents. Totaling $1,101,699.37.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment FY 22 claims and demands of batch number one totaling $1,101,699.37.
Well, well done. You rolled those numbers right out of there.
Got it.
Roll.
Got it down.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Million, I start.
Yeah, right.
Stutter a little bit.
Is it just me or does it seem like we spend a lot of money when Mike shows up?
I know.
This times of year, people are, are having to, uh, sweep all their bills that have been piling up and make sure they get it from my office. That's one of the reasons why they're a little higher this time of year and next two weeks from now it'll be the same thing. Okay, uh, EMS fiscal year 22 demand batch number one in the amount of $214.42.
All right, I move to approve payment of the FY 22 EMS demands in batch number one totaling $214.42.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? I think it costs more to process this. See no comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thanks, Mike. Let's move on to the treasurer's office. Cheryl. Good morning, Cheryl.
Good morning, Mr. Tip.
Good morning. Um, Cheryl Peel, Bonner County Treasurer for the record. I'm requesting approval. Um, for a resolution to destroy records as outlined in our resolution number 1576.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution 2021-93 authorizing the county treasurer to destroy the attached documents as listed. And outlined in the treasurer's retention policy resolution.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thanks, Cheryl. Um, motor pool. And it's Teddy posing as Bob Howard.
Teddy Lupton, for the record. Um, attached, you'll find lease agreements between Bonner County. And Enterprise Fleet Fleet Management for the lease of three 2022 Chevy Blazers. The annual lease payment for these three vehicle vehicles will be $21,471.12 per year. The term of this lease is 48 months and replaces the current one-year lease agreements. These three vehicles will be assigned to the planning department for daily field operations.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the lease agreement between Bonner County and Enterprise Fleet Management. Three 2022 Chevy Blazers in the amount. $21,471.12 per year for a term of 48 months and allow the chair to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Go ahead, Teddy. Solid Waste.
All right, Solid Waste is requesting a budget revision due to unanticipated revenues. Solid Waste received $497,401.73 in unanticipated revenues collected from residential, commercial, and gate fees. Solid Waste is requesting to increase line item 023-7350 in the amount of $497,401.73 from these revenues.
Gee, thanks, Teddy.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the county, uh, resolution 2021-94. Solid Waste budget revision and authorize a clerk to open the budget increased line item 023-7350 in the amount of. $197,401.73 from unanticipated revenue.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Question or comment? I believe so, yeah. Says 2021.
Yes.
Okay. Any other question or comment? I'm here, the clerk. You signed off on it. Okay.
I don't know. I'm just, I'm just filling in. That's all I'm doing.
Yeah, well, that was passing the buck. Yeah, there we go. Okay, so see no comment other than, other than some snarky ones. Yeah.
Mike passed the buck. Yeah, Teddy passed.
All those. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thanks, Teddy. Okay, Suzie, Public Defender's Office. Good to see you this morning, Suzie.
Suzie Jensen from the Public Defender's Office. I'm asking that the county approve the CASA contract for Margaret Williams. This will be the same contract that we had last year. First, okay. Uh, I'd ask that the court or the county approve the conflict contract for Bruce Green at the second level. Again, this will be the exact same contract that was approved last year.
Okay, thank you.
Move the county approve the conflict contract for second level Bruce Green.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead, Suzie. The next one is, uh, Margaret.
I would move that the county approve the CASA contract for Margaret Williams, same as last year.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that the county approve the court-appointed special advocate CASA contract Margaret Williams.
Would second that.
Yeah, we have a motion to second. Any question or comments? Pretty routine. See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, last but not least, Linda.
And I would move that the county approve the conflict contract for the first level, uh, for Linda Payne. This one is a little bit different because of her other commitments. She will only be doing felony matters. She will not be. Basically second string for the misdemeanors post conviction, C P R juvenile cases. Uh, those will be going to a different attorney, which is up for review next week. That shouldn't change the amount of money that we spend. It'll just go to a different attorney.
Okay.
All right, I move the county approve conflict contract for first level Linda P.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment on this one? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Engineering.
This is Brandon. Can you hear me?
Oh, hey, Brandon.
Yeah. Um, okay, Brandon Staglin, Bonner County Staff Engineer. This is just a easement for, um, underground utilities at the Midway Solid Waste Collection Site in Le Cleve. Um, so this is just for Northern Lights, um, to, uh, it's required by them for them to install power to our site so that they can access. The portion of our property that the underground line runs through for maintenance and repairs and et cetera. So I do, I'm just moving that, uh, that, you know, that we signed this easement and then we're going to give it back to Northern Lights and they're going to record it.
Okay, thanks, Brandon.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to authorize the chairman to sign a standard utility easement to Northern Lights. For buried electrical utilities across the property at Midway Solid Waste Collection Site.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Move on to Roden Bridge. Jason Top.
Jason Top, Director, Roden Bridge for the record. Apparently, I write way more than what I should. Listening to everybody else.
Typically, your memos are shorter than class wire, so.
Well, I still, yeah. Short them up.
Usually his motions were like reading more in peace, so.
There you go. Well, I can skip through this a little bit. Try to make it a little faster. We got. I got, uh, Elite Tire and Commercial Tire, both their vendors for Roden Bridge that actually we buy tires from. And I'm gonna buy, I would like to buy tires from District, Jesus, I should just read it.
Yeah.
I'll even put my glasses on. The Roden Bridge Department requests approval to purchase tires from two vendors. One being Elite Tire and Suspension. For tires from the District One shop. The second vendor, Commercial Tire for the District Two shop. Quotes were sought from Elite Tire and Suspension and Commercial Tire as well as GCR. All competitive regional vendors. We propose to accept the quote of $17,396.40 from Elite Tire for District One. And also propose to accept the quote from Commercial Tire for $20,625.40 for the District T shop. We propose to pay for these funds from 0027020 vehicle tires, which is an unobligated amount of $100,000.
Okay, thanks, Susan.
All right, I move to offer, authorize Roden Bridge Department to purchase. $17,396.40 of tires for District One from Elite Tire and Suspicion. Suspension. We have suspicion about this. Also purchase $20,625.40 of tires. And wheels from Commercial Tire for District Two for a combined total of $38,021.80. I'll second them. Three teeth full and see how well you can talk.
I'll second the motion. Are you suspicious of this?
I'm very suspicious now. You know, I wasn't suspicious before we read the motion. Now I'm very suspicious. Okay. We have a motion to second. Uh, any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. We had a little chocolate at your expense, but it'll be okay.
Okay, Sheriff's Department. Cindy, who's doing the honors? Okay, Jackie.
Jackie Rogers for the record. So the first thing we have is Bonner County Sheriff's Office Jail would like permission to receive ARPA funds. In the amount of $10,000. These funds will assist in covering anticipated COVID-related spend expenses for this current fiscal year.
Okay, thanks, Jackie.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve resolution 2020. Does say 22. Should it be 21?
It's, should be the 22 fiscal year.
Those for.
2021-95, right?
Oh, there is. Oh, I'm sorry. It's this quarter. Yes, it is for this current quarter.
Mine says 22. Right. Oh, they need to go by fiscal year, so it's 2021.
Yeah, 2021-95 authorizing the chair to open jail B budget and increase line item 03461-8707. Jail ARPA COVID mitigation by $10,000.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? Yeah, the resolutions run calendar year, even though we have fiscal year break in October 1st. Okay. So seeing no questions or comments, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Go ahead, Jackie.
All right, the second thing we have is the Fourth Amendment to the inmate telecommunications location agreement. Tellmate LLC has provided and maintained inmate electronic communications equipment. And systems for the Bonner County Sheriff's Detention Center, the jail, since entering into an agreement dated August 27th, 2013. The proposed Fourth Amendment would extend the current term of the agreement until October 26th, 2023. Effective October 26th, 2021, or the effective date of May 24th, 2021 FCC order. The rates for the inmate calls and ancillary charge, service charges set forth in the agreement shall be deemed revised, excuse me, revised.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us. I move to approve the Fourth Amendment to inmate telecommunications location agreement. Between Tellmate LLC and Bonner County. The amendment extends the current term of the agreement until October 26th, 2023. And it revises the rates for inmate calls in accordance with May 24th, 2021 FCC order. Along with the ancillary service charges set for the, set for in the agreement.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, Jackie, last but not least, item three, the added item.
Okay, the sheriff, sheriff's office has unutilized funds in the 2021 C budget, allowing for an overage. A resolution is being submitted with a request to transfer $19,500 from the C budget to the B budget. This amount will help cover unanticipated costs of fuel, education, and equipment.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve resolution 2021-96 authorizing the clerk to open the sheriff's. Office 2021 C budget and transfer 03472-9390 capital vehicles to B budget and increase line item. 03451-7860 miscellaneous expense by $19,500.
and increase line item 03451-7860 miscellaneous expense by $19,500.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Well done, Jackie. Is this your first time presenting in front of us? Wow, good joke.
Is it so?
No.
No.
You're great.
Okay, let's move on to planning. Milton.
The Olerton Effect.
Thanks. So we have two PNC Commission members expire September 30th.
They didn't expire, their term ended. You say they expire, it sounds like they died. Yeah.
Their terms expired. Thanks.
Sure.
Commissioner Cheryl Reed, District Two, and Matt Lynn Scott, District One, he resigned his commission. And then Taylor Bradish also resigned his commission in September this year. So we advertised, posted on social media and the website, and we have three names recommended by the chair. Cheryl Reed for reappointment, Jennifer Casey to represent District Two, and Kevin Hatcher to represent District One.
You.
Do we what?
Okay. I'll move to appoint, reappoint to the Planning and Zoning Commission Cheryl Reed in District Two, Kevin Hatcher in District One, for a three-year term expiring September 30, 2024, and appoint Jennifer Casey for the remaining commission appointment in District Two, expiring September 30, 2022. Each appointment beginning October 1, 2021, I further move to adopt resolution 21-97 appointing them to the Bonner County Planning and Zoning.
And I'll second the motion.
I think that's, yeah, 97, you're right. Nevermind. Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, now we're moving on to Recreation. Pete, come on down.
Can we get to go fishing?
Hmm.
An empty boat this week. Morning, Commissioner. Morning, everybody. Pete Hughes for the record. For consideration this morning is a resolution to surplus equipment. Attached is a resolution to surplus Bonner County Recreation Property, 1199 GMC Sierra 2500. VIN number one GTFK24K2LE527556 has been found as no longer useful to recreation. The vehicle was stolen, later recovered, and suffered considerable damages and not, and is not currently in running condition. Recreation would like to include this vehicle in the next public auction held by Bonner County.
Okay, thanks, Pete.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information for us, I move that Bonner County approved resolution 2021-98 surplus 1199 GMC Sierra 2500 VIN number one GTFK24K2LE527556.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment?
Did you like?
Yeah, that was good. You got through it. You stumbled a little bit.
That started all over.
Um, so this thing's not running? What's wrong with it?
Um, it's.
They tore the dash apart to get it to.
There's a bunch of stuff missing.
Did we catch the guy by any chance?
Oh, yeah.
That's, they actually found it.
Yeah, they found it. They found him too.
Okay.
I'm sure he's not stealing another vehicle.
That's what I was told. They hooked a big branch to the front and wrenched it up into a tree.
Yeah, that's a creative.
Entertaining themselves.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other question or comment? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thanks, Pete. Let's move to Airport. Dave Shook. Dave, can we hear you today?
Yes, you can.
Oh, there we go.
Look at that technology. It's a wonderful thing.
Yes.
I have two items. Dave Shook, for the record, Commissioners. First item is change order number one to the Sandpoint Runway Repair Contract. This change order in the amount of $28,475.98 is to cover the cost of increased base rock needed to bring the runway up to elevation for the two-inch paving that was contracted. Original contract amount of $385,292.25 was subject to additional volumes of base rock and paving as needed once the project was underway. This amount is still within the budget allocated for the pavement repairs at Sandpoint Airport in fiscal year 2021. I recommend approving this change order.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County approved this change order in the amount of $28,475.98.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Go ahead, Dave, item two.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number two is a memorandum for the appointment of members to the Bonner County Airport Advisory Board. Bonner County has formed the Bonner County Airport Advisory Board by passage of resolution 1876. All positions on this board have expired. After advertisement in the Daily Bee, the Beacon, and the Gem State Minor, it is the desire to reappoint six of the current members and appoint one new member. The County Airport's Manager and Director, Dave Shook, would go through August 2024. Representative for the City of Sandpoint, Amanda Wilson, would go through August 2024. Representative of City of Priest River, Rex Rolochek, would go through August 2024. Sandpoint Airport, these are users, the next four people on the board are actual users of the airports. Sandpoint would be Jan Lee through August 2023. Sandpoint again, Andy Berry through August 2024. Priest River, Joe Grant through August 2023, and Priest River, Bob DeValle, August 2024. We stagger the users so that they don't, each, both users don't drop off in the same year, so we've got a little bit of carryover in institutional memory.
Great, thanks, Dave.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information presented before us, I move to approve resolution 2021-99 appointing Dave Shook, Amanda Wilson, Rex Rolochek, Andy Berry, Bob DeValle to a three-year term beginning August 21, 2021, and ending August 20, 2024, and Jan Lee and Joe Grant to a two-year term beginning August 21, 2021, and ending August 20, 2023 on the Bonner County Airport Advisory Board.
Second to that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving along to B O C C. Jesse, you gonna do this one? You think Jeff should do this one?
Me?
You go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. The Rural Idaho Economic Development Professional Grant Agreement is entered into and between the Idaho Department of Commerce and Bonner County for the purpose of providing grantee and funding support for the Idaho Economic Development Professional Program. Wow, Bonner County Economic Development Council. The amount of the assistance awarded under MOU was $17,500. Bonner County Economic Development Corp. Council promises to pay the entirety of the grantees matching funds obligated to this obligation owed to the state pursuant to Page One, item two of the agreement. Use of these funds is limited to the salary and benefits for the professional hired to carry out the intent of the program as described in Appendix A scope of work of the agreement. Thanks for that one, Jess. That was just simple.
Fine job.
What did you say? I'm sorry, what did you say, Jess?
Yeah.
No.
Well, I move that the county approve the Idaho Department of Commerce Rural Idaho Economic Development Professional Grant Agreement for FY 2021, 2022, with the understanding that no county funds will be used in support of this agreement.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And it's 9:37, and we'll go ahead and take a five-minute recess and then come back with our executive sessions.